Regular meeting of the Clear Lake City Council. Madam Clerk, can you please read role?
Councilmember Sloten.
Here.
Councilmember Perdok.
Here.
Councilmember Kramer.
Here.
Vice Mayor Overton.
Here.
Mayor Claffey.
Here. Vice Mayor, can you lead us in the pledge?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing. Councilmember Perdok, can you get some?
Yes, of course. Our kind of gracious Father in heaven, we come to you with open hearts and open minds. We ask that you would bless us with your presence in this meeting to lead and guide us so we may do the good work for the citizens and the guests of City Clear Lake. Father, we are grateful for the time that we've been able to serve and we look forward to the transition of power to the new council as they come on board tonight. We ask that your spirit would lead and guide them. It's only been 10 years since we brought prayer back into the city council chamber and we have seen great things come because of that. Father, we'd also like to remember Perkins family. We are grateful for the time we were able to know Bill Perkins. He served on our city planning commission for several years and was a good member in our community. And will be deeply missed. We ask that you would comfort his family at this time. We ask for these things and give you the glory through your son, our Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Mr. Florin, any changes to the agenda?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. As a result of the actions taken at the special meeting, we'd like to pull item number seventeen off the agenda.
Okay. Any, take it back to council?
Make a motion to accept the agenda with item seventeen removed.
A second. I have a motion from Councilmember Perdok, a second from Vice Mayor Overton. Please vote in your portal.
Motion passes with unanimous vote of the council.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Moving on to presentations. Number one, presentation of December's adoptable docs. You just press the button for me on there. You press that button on me, for me.
There we go. This is Leila, our spunky three-year-old terrier mix. Leila is full of energy and ready to run whenever, but is also a cuddle bug, ready to take a snuggle with you after playtime. She would do well with another dog or would be willing to be your only dog friend, too. She is spayed and up to date on all of her vaccines and microchipped. Come meet Leila at our shelter and bring home a Christmas friend.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, council, for the year to date, four hundred and thirty dogs came in the shelter, three hundred and sixty-eight have left the shelter, fifty-nine having been to rescue. Two hundred and seventy-three returned to owner, thirty-three adopted and three euthanized. Additionally, unhealthy or untreated, including owner guardian requested euthanizations. There have been three with a live release rate of ninety-eight point eight-one percent. Currently, shelter population is seventy-three dogs, being sixty adult dogs with thirteen puppies. There's been one hundred and thirty-three microchips this year, one hundred and sixty-nine free vaccination from clinics, twenty-four other unvaccination, sixteen neuters and thirteen spays.
Thank you, Lieutenant. Any questions?
Is there plans on what we're doing with all these puppies?
So those just came in over the past couple of weeks. One of them was an abandoned dog in a cardboard box with all many of these puppies. Once they are old enough and weaned, then they're going to be adopted. Many times with the puppies, they are able to be adopted much easier than the larger dogs. So North Bay Animal Services takes them down to Sonoma County and has a higher chance of getting them adopted and really successful with that.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions? All right, thank you, Lieutenant.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to item F, public comment. This is the time for any member of the public to address the city council on any matter that is not on the agenda, that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city. The Brown Act, with limited exceptions, does not allow the council or staff to discuss the issues brought forth under comment. And just a reminder, this is the time for items that are not on the agenda. So if you have a public comment on something that is on the agenda, please wait until that comes up. So we'll start with Stephanie Codlin.
Press the button for me. Hope I can do this without tearing up. I cry easily. This is to thank the city council for supporting the senior center for many years, but especially lately. And also to, same thing to the, or Golden State Water Company who did the same thing. And it is just, it is so special that to work to be the president, I'm the president of the senior center board. But it is so special to have a wonderful senior center that we do. And we do, I think we have one of the best senior centers maybe in the country. I mean, it is just, it is, well, certainly in this part of California, I certainly think so. So.
Thank you.
Would somebody like to?
Okay, next up, Ms. Tina Wallace, but you say items two, three and four, they're on the agenda. Do you have a separate comment to make? Well, if you're going to comment on items two, three and four, just wait a moment. We'll do it during the consent agenda. Okay. Same question, Christian Preby. Speaking on one of the items in the consent agenda? Okay. Then I will now open up to anyone else who'd like to make a public comment for an item not on the agenda. All right, seeing none. Madam Clerk, any comments on Zoom?
There are no comments on the Zoom, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I will now close public comment and move on to item G, the consent agenda. Mr. Pucci, there was some correspondence on one or more items last meeting. I was wondering if you can give us a brief summary?
Mr. Mayor, I think the recommendation would be to conduct a public comment and then I can provide some comments on procedure.
Wonderful. All right, is there any council member would like to pull something from the consent agenda? Seeing none, I will now open up to public comment on the consent agenda. If you have an item you'd like to touch on, please come forward and we'll start with Ms. Tina Wallace.
Good evening. I'm impressed you could decipher my scribbled name. I'm Tina Wallace. I represent Highlands Water Company. And I'm here tonight to comment on your consent calendar agenda items three and four, a hydrant ordinance and a utility ordinance. And I wanted to comment on the process the city is using as well as the substance of the ordinances. And recognizing that Mr. Pucci and I probably have different points of view, the city has not complied with the Brown Act. The conflicting agendas for your November twenty-first meeting misled the public as to how to participate in the meeting. And when comments for the meeting, comments that were to be submitted in that meeting were due and providing accurate information to the public about how to participate in meetings and how to submit comments is why the Brown Act exists. So our request would be that you continue or take these items off calendar and start again following the Brown Act and all of the proper processes. And I would note that these errors were consequential enough that the city appears to have fixed them for tonight's agenda. Second, going to the substance of the ordinances, I'll begin by noting that there's no franchise agreement with Highlands. And as for your hydrant ordinance, Fireflow is the responsibility of an applicant or developer. The city failed to consult with the Lake County Fire District, the very agency that's going to respond to a fire and use these hydrants. And the ordinance exceeds the city's authority and jurisdiction for water quality. It misrepresents the city's role or the recitals do in wildlife and wildlife protection. It also conflicts with state law. State law dictates what records a mutual water company is required to share and with whom. For your city attorneys, notes that's Corporations Code, section fourteen thousand seven hundred. And that statute says what records a mutual water company can release and to whom, and it does not include any flow testing or hydrant requirements. So that portion of your ordinance is preempted by state law. Turning to your utilities ordinance, implementing that ordinance is an act of condemnation and inverse condemnation. So given these procedural errors and the substantive issues with the ordinance, we request that the city, again, stop this process and re-talk to the Lake County Fire Protection District, talk to us, we're happy to talk to you, and redo the process correctly so that everyone has the benefit of sound, a sound legal procedure. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Wallace.
And thank you for listening.
All right, Kirsten Preby. We have submitted ones first, Chief, and then we'll, you can be next.
Good evening, council members and staff. My name is Kirsten Preby. I am the president of the Board of Directors for Conocda County Water District. Tonight, our general manager Frank Costner is unable to be here, but he wrote a statement and I believe you all have a copy that he wanted me to read. So it says, Dear City Council and City Staff, Conocda County Water District is responsible for all the fire hydrants in our district, not the city of Clear Lake. Conocda Fireflow tests the hydrants when they are installed and flushes them yearly or every other year. When there are changes to the distribution system, the district retests the fire flows on the hydrants affected by the changes. The district maintains the hydrants. The city does not have the regulatory authority to make the water districts comply with the proposed ordinance. If the city had their own hydrants, they could regulate them however they want. This is an unfunded mandate and places an increased financial burden on the water districts. Fireflow testing is a very labor-intensive process. It would take over two hundred and twenty-five man-hours to fireflow the hydrants, not including the flushing that would need to be done after the fireflow testing. Normal yearly flushing is a lot less labor-intensive because it only requires one or two employees. It will cost us anywhere from twelve to twenty thousand to fireflow the hydrants, not including the damage to private property that the fireflow testing could cause. Fireflowing the hydrants takes a lot of water. Opening the hydrants all the way can produce anywhere from eight hundred to two thousand gallons per minute. When the city chips sealed the roads in the avenues, they did not make any improvements to the storm drains system. The city is responsible for the stormwater system. There is no air for the water to go when the hydrants are flushed except into private property. The amount of water that is used and the velocity of the water is sure to cause damage to private property. The city ordinance releases all responsibility to the city for that damage and places the liability on the water districts. This is an unfair burden for Conocda County Water District. The city should be making improvements to the storm drains or accepting the liability for the damage their unfair ordinance causes. Now, he is, I am speaking as a private citizen of Clear Lake. The city council packet had over a thousand pages in it. There has not been enough time for any person to properly review that much documentation. The city council should postpone all ordinances and code changes until the public has enough time to review them and seek legal counsel before they are passed. It seems like these issues are being done because the citizens of Clear Lake voted to change the leadership of the city. The people of Clear Lake's new council members should be the ones making the decisions to change the city's codes and implementing new ordinances.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
All right, Chief Sepetta.
Good afternoon, everybody. Willie's federal county fire chief. The district still has some concerns with the second reading of the ordinance, item number two. The city collecting fees is a redundancy of work to be done when my staff still has to do their annual report and a five-year report. Along with that, on the seven eighteen meeting, you directed the city manager to coordinate with the fire department to look at how that ordinance may look. There was no correspondence until I reached out on the eighteenth of November, in which he said he's working on it. I received it on the twentieth at five fifteen at night. So it gave me, I was away at a convention, I came home the next day, didn't give me any time to prepare for the meeting that night. So we do have concerns of not having some input on, in the ordinance, and I know this is your second reading of it. The second one is the percentage that the city wants to take from those fees collected. We're trying to collect those fees so we can robust resources that we have. And a reduction of those fees is going to be a reduction in what we're doing for our community. The third is the splitting of the district. And our, my district is incorporated and unincorporated areas, one hundred and sixty-five square miles, twenty-some odd square miles are within the city. On seven eighteen, at one hour thirty-eight minutes into the conversation, Mr. Kramer advised that he supported that the buildings, the money for buildings would be kept to the city, but all the equipment could be purchased unilaterally. So I just wanted for me to let you know how the district feels about the ordinance and some kinds of, some concerns that we have with it.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief. Any other comments from the public on the consent agenda? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name's Margaret Garcia. City of Clear Lake is where I live. I've attended many meetings, I'm sure you're aware. And I do recall the meeting that he's referring to, the chief is referring to regarding collection of these fees. And from my recollection, I don't know if I spoke to it at the time, but I thought, why do you guys want to get in on collecting these fees? Is it just because you're going to keep part of the money for collecting the fees and then forwarding it on to the fire district? I thought that was a little unnecessary, not to mention the fact that, like he said, it complicates things. Why it's got to go through your hands, it hasn't been, I believe, for many, many years. And now all of a sudden, it's got to come through the city. I find that is unnecessary and probably a waste of money and a less money for the fire district. Also, just since I'm up here, I'll make mention of the roads. And I guess I don't know what the election outcome was.
Oh, ma'am, that's, that's another.
No, 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 I'm just saying, relax, okay? I'm just saying, if there's new faces, fine, but I've been looking at these faces for the last several years, appear mentioning the road conditions. The road conditions, again, where the buses come in by the park, all around the park are deteriorating, where everything else around it's new. My road that is traveled hundreds of times a day.
Again, ma'am, it's on the consent agenda. I appreciate your comment.
You're right, you're right. I apologize for that. I get, I digress. All right, well, anyway, I just wanted to put my, my opinion in on the whole fire district fee collection and thank you, guys.
It's been a pleasure. All right, any other comments here? All right, seeing none in the chamber, Madam Clerk, any comments on Zoom?
There are no comments on the Zoom, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I will bring it back to council.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr.
Just a couple of procedural points. This is not to prompt any conversation or discussion, as would be inappropriate for the consent agenda. But just on a procedural note, the city's attorney, my office has reviewed in detail the consent, the objections to consent items three and four. Reviewed Ms. Wallace's arguments. We find that both of the items were properly noticed and agendaed. Public comment was afforded to all according to the law and the notification in the, as outlined in the agenda. It's inappropriate for me to engage in a substantive debate in terms of the points made. But I will note that my office has formally responded to Ms. Wallace's Brown Act violation letter. That letter at response is also a matter of public record and outlines the city's review in detail. And lastly, my office has similarly reviewed, along with the city's contract water legal counsel, the substantive objections to the items and find no reason to recommend denying the second read and vote as to those matters at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Pucci. All right, I will now bring it again back to council.
I move, I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll second that. I have a motion from Councilmember Slaton, a second from Councilmember Kramer. Please vote in your portal.
Motion passes with unanimous vote of the council.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. All right, moving on to item thirteen, discussion and consideration of various zoning ordinance text amendments. This is a public hearing, Mr. Roberts.
So good evening, council, and good evening, members of the public. So we're here today to hear about the zoning ordinance text amendment, ZO A twenty twenty-four dash O two. So a little bit of background, in two thousand nineteen, twenty twenty, the city did a comprehensive overhaul of the zoning ordinance. But on occasions, refinements to the zoning code are required to clarify existing regulations, expedite review timelines, implement new statutes, and refine current regulations to improve the administration. So in the staff report, it outlines the various details. There are minor edits throughout it, but the bulk of the changes are outlined. During the planning commission, one of the larger items discussed was the curb gutter sidewalk installation. So staff did a little bit of research. We found out through older zoning codes, appears to be the nineteen eighty-three at ten thousand dollar threshold was established. And that would be for one, if they approved their property or pulled a permit or discretionary permit, it would kick in that requirement. So during the discussions, they wanted the planning commission directed staff to do a little bit of research and find where there could be exemptions and also increase the threshold. So staff increase is proposing, proposed increase the threshold to fifty thousand. And then also be implemented with discretionary permits and entitlements and exemptions. So the exemptions allows one to support your standard routine maintenance permits could be re-roof, windows, electrical, just your improvements to elevate a structure within a flood zone for FEMA requirements, and those would be exempt from the requirements of curb gutter sidewalk. And you know, then there's also options for construction requirements for a waiver where one can enter into a deferred agreement and other options if one is going through the curb gutter sidewalk installation. Some other quick highlights. Are there some changes through tables four and through seven? So a minute, administrative permits are now called administrative use permits. And then conditional use permits are called CUPs now. So it's more clarification purposes in the tables, and also we added zoning permits as well. There is one other one that is more comprehensive. So the other one that was a little more comprehensive was for plan developments, where if one's coming in to do a comprehensive plan, it allows a little more discretion and then say eventually the plan development is approved. If there's minor changes, it allows staff to approve those changes administratively instead of taking back the plan development to the planning commission or city council for reconsideration if staff deems them minor enough to do so. But if you have any questions about the proposed zoning ordinance tech amendments, I'm more than happy to answer any questions you have. It's a pretty comprehensive document.
All right, Councilmember Slaton.
I recommend you because it's a, it's a lengthy document and I did find one little error in the section eighteen dash nineteen dash zero nine zero. Instead of, it's five acres plus goes to a, a conditional use permit and it could be forty acres plus could go to administrative use permit. And for the rest, it was time to update because some of the projects that we have coming online in the near future.
Vice Mayor Overton.
I want to thank you for doing this. This is something that I've been wanting done since I got on the city council. So I am so happy that we have finally, I mean, little things have been done here and there, but it really needed a little more detail. And, you know, thank you for getting that done. I really appreciate the staff's time because I know this took some time to go through each one of these ordinances and see and our planning commissioners for them to do it. And thank you for raising the threshold for the sidewalks, curb gutters and sidewalks because it's hard for some of us that are nonprofits to be able to do anything with that because of that threshold. So I think you'll find that people will be able to do a little bit more fixing up their places now that that threshold is. So, thank you, guys.
Yeah, I'll second that. You know, this was something I wanted to see was to raise that threshold. I'm glad the planning commission agreed. This allows our business owners to invest in their properties and in their business, and we want to see more of that. Any other questions? Not that I think any of us asked any questions from council. All right, seeing none, I will open up to public comment. If you have a comment, please come forward. Yep. Oh, can you just press the button on that?
I'm sorry?
You're good.
Oh, okay. First off, I'm not sure which item you're referring to in this discussion. Was it four?
We're referring to all the items, but the curb gutter and sidewalk section is section 18-20-141. Item 13.
Oh, wrong. Okay, item 13. All right. And is this in the business area on the lake shore? In other words, is this what you're talking about as far as sidewalks and gutters?
All of these zoning amendments affect the entire city in some way.
Okay.
It depends on what specific question.
Okay, well, I'm curious as to the most recent install of the gutters and sidewalks right in my neighborhood are not collecting the water. So, in other words, the gutter is in a spot and then the water collects. So, do you guys have follow-up people that go by and maybe check out the new installs or construction that's happened to see if everything's working properly? And why aren't there sidewalks, you know, in neighborhoods that are being, stuff like that's being done, road improvements being done, but no sidewalks, no gutters are ever even? I don't know if they're ever discussed. In addition, I wish that that would happen. In addition, as far as like this shade structure that's coming up, anyway, I think it wouldn't be a bad idea for you folks to think about like bus stop benches with the shade structure. I went to the bus stops and I know I'm off the agenda. Okay, so anyway, I appreciate it. Thanks.
I do believe Rotary was installing bus stop with shade structures a while back. In terms of curb and gutter, this is why we have it in our zoning ordinance because in the past, a lot of developments were built without curb gutter and sidewalks. So, we're trying to address that. And then I know it wasn't necessarily on topic, but Director Leba, we follow up on road construction projects? Yes.
Oh, you do follow up, you're saying?
We do. Yes.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that.
Right. Mr. Mayor, if I could just make one additional comment related to that. So, you know, it is a question we get a lot of times on why, when we're doing new road projects, why we don't install sidewalks. But there's a lot of need for that. We understand that. You know, it can almost double the cost of projects by doing that. And the city council and the Measure V committee have given direction that with the condition of our roads, we need to prioritize new asphalt. And so, that is why we normally don't do sidewalk projects unless we are able to get additional grant funding to do that part as well.
Thank you, city manager. All right. Any other comments here in the chamber? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, any comments on Zoom?
There are no comments on the Zoom, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I'll bring it back to council. Mr. Kramer.
Yes. Again, thank you for that report, Mr. Roberts. And cleaning up the zoning codes has certainly been something that we've all been wanting to see happen, or clarity and adjustments we've made. I'm ready to make a motion.
Go for it.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve ordinance number 271-2024 and ordinance of the city council of the city of Clear Lake to repeal chapter 18 of the Clear Lake Municipal Code, City of Clear Lake zoning code, and reenact chapter 18 of the Clear Lake Municipal Code, City of Clear Lake zoning code, replacing official city codes and regulations. And read by title only.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask, clarify for the motion maker? If you would like to include the amendment that was identified by Councilmember Sluton earlier?
Yes, including the amendment to that, the language to that discussed by Councilman Sluton. I'll second that motion.
I have a motion from Councilmember Kramer, a second from Councilmember Sluton. Please vote in your portal.
Motion passes with unanimous vote of the council.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Moving on to item 14, Consideration of Development Agreement DA 2024-1 for an existing approved commercial cannabis operation located at 14915 and 14935, Olympic Drive, units C, D, E, and F. Mr. Roberts.
Mr. Mayor, I'll do the staff reports on these two. Okay, so the next two items are basically identical, two separate development agreements. But as you're aware, the city's municipal code requires cannabis projects to go through a use permit process. It goes to the planning commission, and then once that's approved, the city council has to approve a development agreement before that project can move forward. You're also likely aware, because we've been talking about this for a number of years, there's been a lot of ups and downs in the cannabis industry in the last few years, mostly downs. And so, the, there's a number of permitted operations that haven't been operating. Things have changed a little bit more recently. And so, there's some new folks who have come forward and are interested in taking the existing permits that had been issued and converting the development agreements over into their name. So, the way this has been structured in the municipal code in the previous development agreements was that the use permit had already been issued, the new applicant meets with the city. They essentially sign a letter agreement saying that they will abide by all the original conditions of the use permit that had been issued for that site. And then we entered to a new development agreement with the new operator. So, that's what you're seeing here. Both this item and the next item are a variety of units at the Olympic Drive Industrial Plaza. There's very minor adjustments to the development agreement. You know, as you recall, all the ones that have been issued were identical. These two are slightly different in the sense that the the development agreement fee that's being charged by the city to operate in all the previous agreements has been 5% of gross receipts. This is proposing 1%. You'll remember that a couple of years ago, when things weren't going well, a number of the operators came to the city and said, the 5% just isn't going to work. And so, the council temporarily, for one year, reduced the fee to 1%. That exemption has expired essentially. But no one moved forward with those agreements because the market crashed. And so, I think it's reasonable to propose the same thing in these new agreements moving forward and see how things work from both ends. The only final thing I would say to this is the agreements, as they've been set up, are good for three years. And then the city can extend them for additional seven. And so, we did add some language that if we feel like the fee needs to be sort of renegotiated at that point, we would have the opportunity to do so. So, with that, I'll try to address any questions at the council.
Thank you, Councilmember Sluton.
Excuse me. Are there any other existing development fee that are actually paying the 5% at this point?
At this time, no. There has been in the past, but at this time, I don't believe so.
Okay, thank you.
As member Kramer.
Yeah, and just to clarify, we would be locked in at 1% for three years.
Any other questions from council? Seeing none, I'll open up to the public. If you would like to make a comment on this item, please come forward. Yes, please. One moment. Just press your button for me on the bottom of the mic.
There. Is that better? Okay, I was just going to say, I'm sure glad I came to this meeting. There's a lot of interesting things being discussed. I'm just curious, as far as the cannabis permit. I know that a few years ago, I made mention that a lot of the cannabis permits were not being used and just sitting, no income was coming from any type of tax revenue from these businesses that weren't there. I'm curious, is one of the ones on Olympic, one that was an existing business already? And then are they nearby? I'm not familiar with the A, B, and C and D kind of setup. Are these completely new businesses or is one already there?
Mr. Flora, can you just fix in on the location? And then if you want to address the comment about?
Yeah, so it's the Industrial Plaza down here on Olympic Drive. There's really two main buildings. There's a wrought iron fence and gate across from it. It's where Radio Shack used to be, if you remember.
Yeah.
So, these were essentially all of the, there's a number of different suites. Those are the different letters. All of the suites in those two buildings were permitted for cannabis at some point, but.
Never has been a business there.
Right. There was some renovations done and there was transitions. And so, there really hasn't been any operating cannabis.
And then the other one is that was a business already, the second? Same business, same location?
It's the same general location. We're not on that item yet, but yeah.
Okay. All right. Well, I certainly, as far as my opinion goes on the 1%, 5%, I think you should revisit the 5% fee and, you know, collect the right amount of fees from these businesses because I'm sure they're making enough money. Thank you.
At this point, it's been 5% of zero, so it's not very lucrative.
Mr. Mayor, just a point of order. It virtually renders it impossible for the city clerk to time three minutes on question and answer format, just for her sake. Any other comments here in the chamber? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, any comments on Zoom?
There are no comments on the Zoom, Mr. Mayor.
All right, I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to council. Mr. Sluton.
I move that we approve ordinance 273-2024, an uncodified ordinance of the city of council of the city of Clear Lake approving a development agreement, development agreement 2024-01 with Elite CA Enterprises LLC for property located at 14915 and 14935 Olympic Drive Suite C, D, E, F, Clear Lake, California, further described as Assessors Parcel Number 039550-45 and 039550-46.
And I'll second that.
I have a motion from Councilmember Sluton, a second from Vice Mayor Overton. Please vote in your portal.
Motion passes with unanimous vote of the council.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Item 15, Consideration of Development Agreement DA 2024-2 for an existing approved commercial cannabis operation located at 14915 and 14935 Olympic Drive, units A, B2, A and B2. Mr. Flora, anything to add?
Yeah, again, same location, different operator. So, unless you have any questions, I don't think I need to give additional comments.
Any questions from council? All right, I'll open up to public comment. If anyone would like to make a comment on this item, please come forward. Seeing none. Madam Clerk, any comments on Zoom?
There are no comments on the Zoom, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I will now close the public hearing and bring it back to council.
To approve ordinance 274-2024, an uncodified ordinance of the city council of the city of Clear Lake approving a development agreement, DA 2024-02, with June Bugs, okay, for property located 14915 and 14935 Olympic Drive Suites A and B2, Clear Lake, order described as Assessors Parcel Number 039550-45 and 039550-46.
And I'll second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Sluton, a second from Vice Mayor Overton. Please vote in your portal.
Motion passes with unanimous vote of the council.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Moving on to item 16, Discussion and Consideration of Resolution 2024-56, approving a memorandum of understanding between the county of Lake, city of Lakeport, and city of Clear Lake, authorizing the formation of the Lake County Regional Housing Trust Fund. And that would be Mr. Flora.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council member. So, yeah, on November 7th, the council received a presentation from Lisa Judd, who's a deputy county administrative officer for housing about this program. And at that time, the council directed us to bring back a memorandum of understanding for approval. That's what's before you tonight. So, we do have Ms. Judd on Zoom. I don't know if she wants to provide any input, or are you just here to see if there's any questions, Lisa?
Good evening, council and staff. Yes, I'm just here to answer any questions that may arise.
Thank you, Ms. Judd, for joining us.
Okay, so I don't know if you want me to get into any of it. You, I'm sure, reviewed the MOU. This afternoon, I did receive from Ms. Judd, some slight red lines that had came through their legal counsel to the MOU that's attached to this staff report in reviewing them. I don't think that there's anything of a substantive nature. But I just wanted to point out we are pressed for time to have this done before the end of the year so that we can submit an application to fund this through state grant program. So, if the council's okay with it, I would just include in any direction to approve the resolution and the MOU that city manager Pucci, or city attorney Pucci and myself could approve any minor administrative changes that might come up. And then, of course, if there's any substantive ones, we would bring it back to the council.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Flora. Any questions from council? Seeing none, I will open up for public comment. If you'd like to make a comment on this agenda item, please come forward. Seeing none, Madam Clerk, any comments on Zoom?
There are no comments on the Zoom, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I'll bring it back to council.
I move that we approve Resolution 2024-56, resolution approving a memorandum of understanding, MOU, between the county of Lake, city of Lakeport, the city of Clear Lake, authorizing formation of the Lake County Regional Housing Trust Fund with some minor modification as required by our attorney.
Second. I have a motion from Councilmember Sluton, a second from Councilmember Perdon. Please vote in your portal.
Motion passes with unanimous vote of the council.
All right, we're going to skip item 17, as previously discussed, and move on to item 18, Discussion and Consideration of Resolution SA-2024-3, recommending the Lake County Redevelopment Agency Oversight Board amend the loan terms for Olympic Village Apartments. Mr. Flora.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let me remove the spotlight from Ms. Judd. Okay, there we go.
Thank you, Ms. Judge, by the way.
Okay, so in 2009, the former redevelopment agency of the city loaned $700,000 for the development of Olympic Village Apartments, it's a 54-unit project down here on Olympic Drive. As is consistent with most affordable projects, there's a 55-year affordability covenant. And that's also the term of the loan. The way these loans were structured at the time, essentially, there's no payments on our loan until the end of the term. And so, now there's $700,000 in principal owed and about $540,000 in interest at this point. Still a lot of years left until 2064. So, the owner reached out to us and they're looking at making some changes in their portfolio and is wanting to sell this property to another buyer. And, you know, they had an appraisal, looking at the value. The loan exceeds the value of the property. So, there is our loan and there's another Fannie Mae loan on the property as well. So, they came asking if we'd be willing to forgive all of our debt. So, there are specific requirements on redevelopment agency debt. This is debt not. Um, this is debt not, um, the city would receive a portion of this back when it's paid, but it's all the taxing agencies. The county, um, cemetery district, whoever else may be a taxing agency for that property. Um, it will be distributed among all of them, and so. As part of the dissolution process, there are some some guidelines on what can be done and. It's been, we've been directed by the State Controller's Office that the principal in these loans cannot be forgiven. They are owed to the taxing agencies, but um. The successor agency and then ultimately the Lake County Oversight Board uh can decide to forgive the accrued interest. That's what we're recommending here. Um, you know, it would be nice to get all the money or, you know. None of us will probably be involved in this um in twenty sixty-four, but um. You know, we we don't want to um shortchange that, Deb, but um, we're we're running in, there's a number of projects that were funded at that time with these type of loans. That are not worth the loan amounts and. Uh, worst case scenario is for these units to fold up and not be available to people in our community. And so it's our recommendation that we um. Agree to this flexibility in the accrued interest and um approve this uh recommending the the ultimate authority on being able to approve this is with the Lake County Oversight Board. And so um, if you now sitting as the successor agency to the redevelopment agency. Recommend approval to this, we will schedule a meeting with the Oversight Board um before the end of the year uh for final approval.
Thank you, Mr. Flora. Any questions from counsel? Mr. Uh, Vice Mayor Overton.
And so are we just waiving what is owed now, but they'll accrue, or is it forever?
It would be all of the interest, so they would just owe the seven hundred thousand.
So at the end of fifty-five years, we'll get the principal back.
Yeah.
Twenty sixty-four. Yeah, or if they sell it, do we get the principal back then if they this other company?
Well, yeah, the the loan would follow the new, the buyer, yeah.
Okay, all right, okay, thank you.
Councilmember Suton.
How many, how many, you said how many units?
Fifty-four units.
Yeah, we really can't afford to have that place go dark if they don't do some improvements, I understand, so. Yeah, it's, we're kind of behind the eight ball here, but I think we need to approve this.
Well, the other issue to be aware of with these, a lot of these units, I mean, there. There's a lot of years left on the affordability covenants, but you know, they're fifteen, twenty years old, and so. They really need to be renovated as well, and that's something that we have talked to our state legislators about, like. The the programs, California is pushing so much of the housing funding into building new units, but. You know, I've been complaining for a while, there needs to be some funding for rehab because it's it's worse if we lose the ones we have right now because they're uninhabitable.
Thank you, City Manager, any other questions from counsel? All right, I'll open up to public comment. If anyone has a comment on this agenda item, please come forward. Seeing none, Madam Clerk, any comments on Zoom?
There are no comments on the Zoom, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, I'll bring it back to counsel. Mr. Kramer.
I don't like any of the choices. But I don't see where we have any any choice um but to approve this resolution, so I will make a motion. To the, as the Clear Lake Successor Agency, I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution Number SA dash two oh two four dash oh three. A resolution of the successor agency to the City of Clear Lake Redevelopment Agency approving an amendment to the agency loan. With April Housing for Olympic Village Apartments to eliminate accrued interest. And recommending the Lake County Redevelopment Agency Oversight Board approve the agreement.
I'll second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Kramer, a second from Councilmember Suton. Please vote in your portal.
Motion passes with the unanimous vote of the successor agency.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Item nineteen, discussion and consideration of Resolution twenty twenty-four dash fifty-five approving the appraisal fixing the amount of just compensation. And authorizing offer to owner of a portion of twelve one zero five San Joaquin Extension Clear Lake for right of what? Mr. Flora.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember. So you'll recall in February, we had a fairly significant winter storm. Uh, did cause the start of a um landslide up in the near San Joaquin, up near the Goose Neck. We did some some temporary work to protect it through the rest of the rain, which um ended up being successful. It was, had the potential to damage both our our roadway and um two other houses down slope. We were able to work um with, we declared a state of emergency, we're able to get um through a a program of Caltrans. Uh, funding for a hundred percent reimbursement of an emergency repair for that slope. Um, so we had an engineering firm design um what needed to happen there. I'm sure most of you have probably been out there and seen that um what was just a slope, there was, you know, quite a bit of of work done and there were. Bunch of, uh, I think they call them screws put into the land and then uh concrete on their nails. Yeah, nails. Um, so anyway, um, that was all designed, the work is complete. So we had to front the two million dollars that was spent on this project, and now we're trying to get our money from Caltrans. One of the requirements is um as part of the design. Areas that were improved as part of this project have to become public right away. Um, and we will not get our money back until that happens. So there was two property owners with just a few hundred square feet. The one that's before you tonight is seven hundred eighty-nine square feet. Um, so we got appraisals done, um, we submitted the appraisals to the owners. One of them, uh, I believe closed escrow today, so that one is not an issue. This one, um, the proprietor has been unresponsive. Um, you may also recall that the proprietor filed a a claim against the city for demands of the number of things. Um, which was denied, but um what we're asking now is really formalizing this process, which is actually approving the appraisal that was done. And um authorizing us to make that formal offer to the owner. And so this, just to be clear, this is the first step in the condemnation process.
Thank you, Mr. Flora. Any other comments or any questions from counsel? Seeing none, oh.
Well, I just want to thank our public works director and the swift work that they did. I can't imagine what would have happened if we would have lost that section of roadway. Um, that would have been a significant burden on the people living out past the Goose Neck. Having to traverse, you know, into the Clear Lake Oaks area and then come into town, it would added probably an hour of of an additional driving time. Um, so again, thank you very much for saving that road and uh keeping services and things um. Open to us, with those that live out there. Thank you.
Any other questions from counsel? Seeing none, I'll open up for public comment. If anyone has a comment on this item, please come forward. Yes, ma'am. Please just press the button on the mic.
It's red. Oh, there we go, uh, Margaret Garcia, City of Clear Lake. Um, regarding the San Joaquin um repairs that were done, you said they're just finishing up. Now, is this the same repair work that you got the grant for, the the slide grant recently, like within the last year? Is that the same funding?
Is that your full comment? Because I just got yelled at by our city attorney, so I'll get your question answered, but is that your full comment?
Um, maybe not, I'm not really sure, but don't I have three minutes?
You do, go go through your comment and then we'll.
Well, I was wondering, is that the same funding? And I know that San Joaquin Road was a big recipient of miles of roadwork that was recently done and all the mileage of. Roadwork completed for the city, and I'm wondering, is that happened before this slide and all of this work was done um with this grant money?
Yeah, excellent, thank you, ma'am. Um, Mr. Flora, can you explain the the financing situation? Thank you, ma'am.
Yeah, so we did receive a grant to do all the roadwork. Um, that's the one that was closed out earlier today at the special meeting. And then, yeah, the slide happened after the roadwork was done and um. It's not so much a traditional grant, it's just as an emergency. Program, Caltrans has funds uh for eligible projects for emergency repairs, and that's but uh what you're referring to.
Thank you, City Manager. What is it now, Mr. Flora?
Um, well, I think actually we were authorized for um close to four million dollars.
What's that?
Three point two. Um, we, the the final project ended up costing right at two million, so.
Thank you. Any other comments here in the chamber? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, any comments on Zoom? Ma'am, ma'am, we're we're past that point, thank you.
There are no comments on the Zoom, Mr. Mayor.
The 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 next mayor might be a bit more strict, ma'am, so be careful. Um, all right, uh, thank you, Madam Clerk, I'll bring it back to counsel. Mr. Suton.
I move that we approve Resolution twenty twenty-four dash fifty-nine, a resolution of the City of Clear Lake. City Council of the City of Clear Lake approving the appraisal fixed amount for just compensation and authorizing offer to owner Andrew Bailey Hewlett. Portion of one two one zero five San Joaquin Avenue, Clear Lake, California.
I will second that motion, Mr. Mayor.
I have a motion from Councilmember Suton, a second from Councilmember Kramer. Please vote in your portal.
Motion passes with unanimous vote of the council.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Moving on to item. Twenty, consideration of introduction and first reading of ordinance number two seven eight dash two zero two four, adjustment to council member compensation. Ms. Swanson, can you just give us a summary?
Absolutely, Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers. Mayor Claffey's proposed an ordinance to increase the compensation of city council members. Currently, city council members receive five hundred per month as established by the municipal code. It was last amended in twenty twenty. According to Government Code Section thirty-six five sixteen. City council members are allowed to raise the uh amount up to five percent per year. Um, and in this case, there would be the total of. There would be a total of. Ten fifty that the council would be allowed to uh raise the. Monthly stipend to. Benefits, of course, such as health insurance, et cetera, are not included in that calculation. So you have before you tonight consideration of the first reading of an ordinance which would raise that and the discussion for the council would be. If and how much you would uh care to raise it. Keeping in mind that this uh salary change would not take effect until after the. After one person on the the new council commences a new term or at the next general election, which in this case. Would be uh January of twenty twenty-seven.
Thank you, City Manager. Um, and so I propose this, it's always politically awkward to to raise your own pay. Um, and it's a large reason why it hasn't been raised in so long, and even in twenty twenty, it was stunted a bit because, you know, obviously, it's tough to do that. Fortunately, I don't have to worry about that anymore. Um, and, you know. I work in an industry where analyzing compensation is very important. To me, it's pretty clear, the time, energy, dedication of to do this job and do it well, regardless of of who's up here. Um, right now, the rate doesn't match that. Um, and I also don't believe the the council should only be comprised of retired folks and independently wealthy people. We want to have compensation that allows folks to travel back and forth to Lakeport and Sacramento. Um, to hire a babysitter if you have a family. To have time, if you have a full-time job, to read a thousand-page agenda, yes, we read those, Mr. Costner. Um, and to become a subject matter expert on over thirty topics in a given year. Um, it it's it's a lot of work. So for me, it, being a council member is a service to my community, I I've always enjoyed it. But I also understand that it's it's a burden that people take on, and I think, um, you know, since I'm on my way out the door, I figured this is. Something I can do to really shine a light on it and take the heat. I'm happy to take the heat because we have three amazing new city council member coming in. Um, in twenty twenty-six, we'll have two more that will be elected. Um, none of these people here on the dais right now are going to be impacted by this. It's more me as a resident and as a taxpayer, making sure that our next batch of leaders. Uh, has a solid financial foundation to do the job and do it well. So that was my motivation for putting this on here. Um, I will now open it up to counsel questions.
Mr. Mayor, can I just make a clarification to Ms. Swanson's lovely presentation? On on calculations, um, the the amount that council is allowed to set a salary is set by statute. Um, and that base amount uh currently is at five hundred is is only allowable to be raised to the max based on population size. So the the max that under uh Clear Lake's population that the council could go to would be nine hundred and fifty dollars. In addition, the statute authorizes an additional five percent in a cost of living increase. Um, from the time of the last increase, which is where Ms. Swanson gets the additional um one hundred dollars to get to one thousand one hundred and fifty. So that was just clarification for the record.
Thank you, Mr. Pucci. Any questions from counsel? Mr. Suton. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Kramer, go ahead.
Well, either way. I appreciate the gesture. And to clarify, I haven't decided that I wouldn't run in twenty twenty-six. But that aside, and 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 I'm probably the retired person that you were talking about in that uh comment, not the not the independently wealthy one. But all of that said, I I agree with you that I that. The cost that the. Cost of being on council, there is a cost of being on council, and five hundred dollars probably doesn't cover it. That said, I'm uncomfortable with us, this council starting this process and ending with the next council. I think, uh, to me, I'd be more comfortable with the next council, the one that starts in January. It'll be uh seated tonight. Start that with the first reading and the second reading if they want to go ahead with it, and so that, I'm I'm not in favor with us starting this.
All right. Councilmember Suton.
I second that opinion, I think it's the new council, incoming council should decide this and that.
Vice Mayor Overton?
Let me see if I can change your mind. So twenty years ago, when I got on city council, we got three hundred dollars. I'm going to tell you, the first eight years cost me sixty thousand, so that three hundred dollars was nothing. So when we got raised to five hundred, I was kind of excited because it's like, oh, my God, I can pay for my gas and stuff. Because you have no idea where you have to go. I mean, there are, I mean, I went down to Sacramento a lot, so, you know, I spent a lot of time down there fighting for laws and money for us to keep and stuff, but uh, you know, not all city council members do. Um, you know, but I I think since, I mean, believe me, in twenty twenty-seven, this is going to be nothing, it's going to be pocket change. You know, we see how the prices are going up and how gas is, and I'm sure it's going to be way higher than what it is now, so. I disagree, I think that we need to set it now so that when the new council does become a a new council. Uh, which could be even longer, because if somebody runs, then of course it extends. So this may not go in in twenty twenty-seven, so I think it's good to start the process now.
Uh, Mr. Pucci or Ms. Swanson, it it would regardless go in twenty twenty-seven.
Um, that is the autumn, it it goes into effect at the next vacancy and seating of a council member.
So two years from now.
Or or the next vacancy and seating of a council member, yes, presumably two years from now.
Okay, so if somebody leaves, then this would go into effect, okay, I got it, now so that makes sense, but still. It it's it's expensive to to go to these meetings, and now that we can't all do Zoom all the time, yet somebody has to be in person. Yeah, so, yeah. Get that much, is it that much? I don't think it's that much, but but, you know, so I I I'm in favor of going ahead and starting the process now.
Any other questions from counsel? All right, I'll open up to public comment. Anyone here in the chamber like to make a comment? Yes, ma'am.
I think, oh, there we go, I'm on. I I just had to comment on this uh as well as all the other comments I make, but I think you guys totally deserve um a raise from five hundred bucks a month. Um, I see you guys here twice a month, uh, and you guys work hard at what you do and what you have to. Put up with uh at times and deal with on the regular. Um, I think you guys are totally uh worth a raise, or whoever takes the positions, in other. Um, I think you guys are totally, uh, worth a raise, or whoever takes the positions, in other words. Um, it's a big responsibility you guys take on, and I know you guys do, um, a lot of hard work and travel, um, a lot to do your work. So I, I just, as a citizen of the City of Clear Lake, I, I want to give you guys my support on that. Thank you.
Any other comments here in the chamber? Yes, please.
Yes, hi, my name's Angela Rising, and I'm living here in Clear Lake. I just think that we should set them up for success, especially if it's a younger group coming in. It would be so much better and beneficial if they didn't have to worry about the extra daycare or how I'm going to get to Sacramento. And if we're setting it up for success, they have a better chance of being more apt to do their job up here. And that's all.
Any other comments here in the chamber? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, any comments on Zoom?
There are no comments on the Zoom, Mr. Mayor.
All right, I'll bring it back to council. Vice Mayor Overton?
I'd like to make the motion to accept ordinance number Two Seven Eight Dash Two Zero Two Four and ordinance amending municipal code section two dash one point two to increase the compensation of the city council members effective January twenty twenty-seven.
Mr. Mayor, just point of clarification here, um, and a possible request for a, a tag on that motion. If in fact the intent is to make the, the increase effective upon an earlier time before the, the, the next general election, we would have to add some additional language. It's nothing that, it, it's just some cleanup language that needs to be in the agenda. So if that's the intent that you would like the ordinance to be effective upon the vacancy and filling of the next council seat, I just need to add a few more languages, language, and, and simply Vice Mayor Overton can indicate with that, that motion to include that direction.
I make that motion to include those directions.
Second, I have a motion from Vice Mayor Overton, a second from Councilmember Perdok. Please vote in your portal. Refreshing.
Motion passes with three in favor, Claffey, Overton, and Perdok, and two against Kramer and Slaton.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Moving on to item twenty-one, update on the senior and community center project. Mr. Flar, do you want me to take this? So we have recently had some renovations done to the senior center, um, and overall, an incredible project, great job team. City staff did a wonderful job executing on that. Um, I do believe there is something missing as part of that renovation. Um, and it's quite glaring. So as mayor, I take a, a significant amount of blame in that. Um, so I toured the site recently and documented what I'm referring to. Um, so Alan, if you could show a photo of the facade here. Next facade. So for twenty years, Joyce Overton has served on the city council, served our chief seniors. Is frankly, one of the hardest working women in our community. She's been a mentor, a voice of reason, a connector at the state level, and a fine, and financially savvy, savvy when our city needed it the most. You've changed many, many lives here in Clear Lake for the better, and I believe it's more than appropriate to commemorate your twenty years of service, your countless hours of sweat and, it's sweat and tears by renaming the building that means so much to the people of this community and all the people that you've impacted. So that is my proposal to rename the community center. This is a mayoral rendering, so I don't know what the final version will look like, but the hope is it would be something along the lines of the Joyce Overton Community Center.
This is going to start crying now.
Any questions from council?
Yeah. How do we make this happen?
Well, I think, uh, we have to make a vote on it.
Okay, I'll move.
Well, not yet, not yet. Any, any other questions from council? If not, I'll open it up to public comment. Um, Ms. Godling, do you, can you, can you speak?
It should be the Joyce Overton Senior Center. I'm sorry.
Great job, Stephanie. Thank you. Any other comments here in the chamber? Yes, ma'am. All right, we already have a second. Uh, and a third, um, so whoever forces it up here, please do. Uh, any other comments? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, any comments on Zoom?
There are no comments on the Zoom, Mr. Mayor.
I will bring it back to council, Councilmember Kramer.
Yes, I'm not sure that this requires a, a formal vote or disdirection to staff, which, whichever way we want to do it, but.
I think we vote.
My, my vote is, I don't know if we have a portal to vote on, on this, but I will vote yes.
I'm going to say that's a motion from Councilmember Kramer. I have a second from Councilmember Slaton. I have a third, fourth, and fifth in the audience. Um, we'll do a vote, voice vote on this one. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All those opposed?
Good catch, Mr. Mayor.
Any abstance? No? All right. No. The motion passes unanimously. So more details to come. We'll have someone who's actually competent figure out how to make this work. That's not, uh, could be a neon, that.
There's a brand new Neo signs right in front.
There is. City Manager Report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers. Um, few items tonight. Our, uh, recreation events coordinator is going to be leaving us. Um, she's planning to move out of state, uh, with her family. So, um, very soon, we're going to be recruiting for that position. So, um, it's really hard to, to see Tina leave. She's done so much, has so much energy, but, um, good things in store for her with, with that transition, hopefully. So a lot of other things going on. Um, we have a couple of police officers in final stages of background, so, um, assuming those make it all the way through, we'll just have one, uh, police officer vacancy at that point. Um, we've hired a new secretary who will be starting early in January. Um, Director Laba hired, um, someone for our public works crew. So, you know, we have a lot of, uh, women on our staff generally, but this is the first woman actually on our public works crew. So we're pretty sure she's gonna get them all into shape out there. So that'll be, that'll be good. Um, a few project updates, um, the ballpark project, uh, they've been doing the FTR treatment um, the last week or so, uh, that's on track to begin paving on Monday. Uh, dam, half of dam road was paved. I guess the rest will be done tomorrow. Um, the tree streets, they started paving yesterday. Um, that project is going quite well. And Clear Lake Park is, I guess, maybe something like ninety percent done. Essentially, the paving is done there for this year. Golden State is still, um, doing work to lower some conflicting water lines. And so, um, I think all the paving that's been done on that project that will happen this year has been done. And then, um, early next year, when all the waterline work is complete, we'll be able to finish out a few streets that are held up there. But a lot of asphalt, um, going down the city right now. So it looks like by the end of next week, all the paving, um, that can be done at this time will be complete. And really that, just the section up in Clear Lake Park will need. Um, there was some mention of some of the signs. There's, um, various signs that went up, um, around town this week. Um, all of our parks got new, newly designed signs, and there's three, um, LED screen signs that were installed, one at the Joyce Overton Community Center, um, one here in front of City Hall, and then one in front of the youth center. So still doing some testing and getting everything worked out so that we'll, uh, be able to, uh, put some messaging out on things that are going on in the city, which will be hopefully much more visible, uh, for the community to know what's going on. Um, along that line, we're, um, during the end of our website update, I mentioned this probably a couple of months back. At this point, the end of January, January twenty-eighth is when, um, the new website refresh and branding will be up complete live. Um, the Boils Fire, um, we're continually getting a lot of questions on when the debris cleanup is going to start. Um, we're expecting that to start a significant amount of time ago. I really don't know what the delay is. We've submitted all of our stuff. Um, I just checked again today with Cal OES, and they will be sending some crews out to do some, uh, assessments on what's there before they bring in the, the crews actually in. I mean, the contract has been issued and all that, but they still do not have a firm date on when that's going to happen. So it's, I think, getting a little frustrating for some of the homeowners who really want to get back in and, and get rebuilt. But, um, hopefully that'll be happening very soon. And then the final thing, you know, the last few meetings, there's been, uh, pretty lengthy agendas. There's a lot of stuff that we wanted to try to get done this year. Um, so we're able to accomplish a lot of it. Um, I did just want to point out one thing that, um, has been um, a reoccurring theme in particular from Councilmember Perdok and Councilmember Slaton over the years has been a rental registration, um, and inspection program. So we do have that ordinance on the books, but it hasn't been, uh, enforced in the city since, I think, two thousand and eight. Um, we have been doing a lot of work on this. Um, we're expecting that in late January, perhaps February at this point. We're, we're expecting to have that up and going. So, um, uh, it looks like in January, we'll be bringing back, um, modifications to the municipal code for the council to consider and approve to get that going. But we now have the staff in place. We have the technology in place, um, to finally make this happen. So, um, I was kind of hoping that you would get the chance to vote on it, Councilmember Perdok, but, um, we didn't quite get there. But, uh, it will be happening. So, uh, with that, that's my.
I think that's the first. Sorry. I think that was the first item I talked to you about when I came on council in eighteen. So I'm really excited about that.
Thank you for reminding me how long it took.
Something I was working up when I was on planning commission. There we go. So it's been a long time coming. Um, when you visit some of these places with absentee landlords, um, the quality of housing is deplorable, um, yet they still cash those checks every month, um, while people are living in, in places that should not be habitated. So I appreciate this. I, I'm grateful that we are able to find the ability to pay staff to go out and conduct those inspections, make sure that people are living in quality homes, um, that are paying the rent for those homes. So thank you for doing that.
All right. Thank you, City Manager. We'll move on to, um, council reports. Uh, Councilmember Slaton, why don't you kick us off?
I have really nothing to report since, uh, didn't go to any meetings since the last council.
All right, Councilmember Kramer?
Yes, I, I'm not going to report on any meetings, uh, but I am going to take this time to express to this entire council with a pleasure and an honor. It's been for me to serve with you for these last four years and more. Uh, I'm going to miss the three of you tremendously. I look forward to working with the three of you that are coming on. I hope that, uh, you look at, at the accomplishments of this council and figure out the reason that it's happened is because while we may not always agree on everything, every time, we're all pulling in the same direction, and that is to make the City of Clear Lake a better place to live and prosper. So that's, that's my comments, um, for the whole council. Individually, Joyce, you helped me in, in ways after I was appointed. He supported me. You taught me how to be a councilperson. I didn't know before that. I thought I did, but I didn't. And, and, and then when it came timed, I was appointed initially, as you remember, and then I had to run in that November. He took me under your wing. He became my campaign manager, which was wonderful because I had no idea what I was doing and that. And you ushered me through, um, supported me all the way, and, um, I will never forget that. David, you're the, you're the, the newbie here. Um, and you did, you came to me, uh, I think, on a few times, and I, hopefully I helped you along. But the progress that you've made in the last four years has been amazing. You've been, you've become, you're, this year as mayor, uh, you've done a fantastic job. You've, I, beyond any, any of my expectations, uh, you've, you're a, you're a quiet leader. You've always, uh, as much as I think we all study the material and spend a lot of time on the material, you go up and be, over and beyond that. You, uh, you go out of your way to look further and to come up with out-of-the-box type ideas. I didn't agree with all of them, but they were, I, I appreciated that you did it, and I appreciate the effort that you put into it. I'm going to miss you. And Russell? I call him Russell when I'm, uh, when I'm being serious. But most people think that's because we're mad at each other when we're doing that. You're the one that got me into this to begin with.
Sorry.
You, uh, you, you, um, well, I think I, I probably helped to get you into it originally. I, I supported you when you were, you know, you sure that you thought you could, uh, get on council. You did, and you've done a wonderful job. And again, I, I, I followed, uh, I, I had the courage to put my name in the hat because you told me that I could do it. And I'll never forget that. Um, we've been friends for a long, long time before and after this, and I, uh, I'm truly going to miss you, and I'm going to miss sitting next to you on this dais. So, okay, those are my comments.
Thank you, Councilmember Kramer. Councilmember Perdok?
Work this right. I do like the new microphones. Just a little bit of training and I'll get it down. Anyway, thank you all. Um, I just want to say how grateful I am. It has been a pleasure to serve in the City of Clear Lake. Um, seen a lot of changes from twenty fourteen when Bruno and I ran. Um, and I'm just grateful that I got the chance to serve, and I'll just leave it there. Thank you all so much.
Vice Mayor Overton?
Well, I could go on because I've had twenty years here. So, you know, I can go on way longer than those guys can, but I won't. I'm just going to tell the new ones. You know, we're here to support you guys. Um, you know, it, it was a campaign. It was nothing personal, and I hope you guys don't take it personal. But, you know, I want to let you know that I'm here for anything that you need, uh, you know, a, any advice, or if you want me to help you with something, you know, I'm here for you guys. So I will support you in everything that you want to do for the city. I'm sure with some younger ones there, it would bring some new ideas, just as David did, uh, you know, some innovative things that us older people might, may not necessarily see because you guys are out in the, in the younger community, and that's always good to bring to the council. So, you know, I look forward to seeing, you know, everything that you can do for our city and hopefully keep our city moving progressively into the future. I mean, I've seen so much in the, over the twenty years from going from devastation, if the city was, into this wonderful city that we've become. That also isn't just the city council. That's working with our staff. We don't always agree. Ask Alan. We butt heads lots of times, but you got to really learn to please make politics stay in politics. Family and friends stay family and friends. Never bring the politics out of here. If you argue with somebody on this dais, doesn't mean that's, they hate you or anything. It just means they have a different opinion. So I really hope you guys take that seriously, to leave the politics as politics and family and friends as family and friends. It will do you a lot of good if you do that. I've had, I've lost friends that have sat on city council because they couldn't separate it. So I'm giving you some advice to separate that and make sure that you don't take it out of the building, you know? And if you butt heads with your council, you know, that's okay. When you walk out of here, we butt heads all the time. You should close sessions. You guys, we, we'll, we'll learn. But we walk out of here and we say, have a great night, see you tomorrow. Whatever we're doing, we still all work together, and, you know, we make a good team. So, uh, you know, I hope you guys will continue that effort to keep everything cohesive and, and, and us moving forward. As far as my council, you know, it's really been an honor working with all of you. I can, I could sit here and go on forever about each one of you guys are all fabulous. about each one of you guys are all fabulous in your own ways. You know, and I've appreciated each one of you guys coming to me, telling me things. That's when I ask for advice, give it to me. Uh, um, Alan, Tim and I butt heads, but we always come out saying it's okay. You know, it's, it's great. I love all our staff. They're great. We're, we're lucky. We are very, very lucky that we have a wonderful, wonderful police department. We have a great chief of police. We have a great manager. We have great department heads and, you know, and we're expanding. I'm been very proud to sit here and I'm, I feel like the mama because I've seen everybody grow up here, you know? So it's kind of like Melissa was so young, you know, I look at her now or she's, but, you know, her baby is, is, is grown. So I kind of am, am kind of feel like I'm really proud of everything that all of you guys have done. I've watched you from the counters go up. And you guys, I hope the new council realizes these people have worked very hard for their positions because most of them started off at the counter or in a very low position and they've worked themselves up to management. So, you know, be proud of your city, be proud of your staff, be proud of your police department. They're all great and I really appreciate it. Okay, now I'm done. Now my windiness has come in.
Have a do-over. Before you go. No, no, I have to because the president's sitting in the chamber. Um, we have a Christmas dinner that we're going to be serving at Burns Valley Elementary School on the fourteenth. Um, and so President Zabdi, thank you for being here and reminding me, um, to make that public notice, um, or public announcement. So hope the community comes out. We'll have warm for the winter coats. We're going to have a beautiful lunch and gifts and Santa for the kids. And we're still collecting for warmer for the winter. The fourteenth, Burns Valley Elementary School, um, start serving about noon.
Ten.
Ten.
Start cooking.
Yeah, familiar. Yeah, I got it. Okay. I wasn't going to, nobody's going to say anything, Joyce.
Um, geez. I, I don't. I don't know if I can top any of that. Um, I, I agree with all your statements, uh, Vice Mayor Overton. Um, I remember before I was even on the city council and you talked about the Rotary Dinner, um, you know, it was before I was on city council and all five council members were there serving food, giving out jackets. Um, it really showed me what it means to be a community leader, not just on the council, not just sitting up here and, and coming up with the ordinances and reading a lot of material. It's about contributing and you four have done that. You've set the bar really, really high and I've tried to meet that and I hope, um, it shows because this, this whole community is better for all the work that you've done. So thank you. Um, I will cap my report there and I will move on to item fourteen. I'm sorry, not fourteen. I'm already, I'm already twenty-two. A quick presentation. So usually, um, at the end of, of the term, we have beautiful awards that we give to the departing council members. Unfortunately, I spent most of my time creating that beautiful graphic. Um, so I forgot to order the awards. I apologize. But, um, just, just there, just. No, um, so Councilmember Overton, I've obviously, uh, shared, I think, the opinion of the community, all the great work you've done over the years. Um, and I think Councilmember Kramer also touched on that. You, you've, you've done an amazing job. So here's this beautiful picture of an award for you.
I want to clarify, it was not Mayor Claffey's fault. They were ordered. They just did not arrive when they were supposed to.
Uh, and then Councilmember Prodock, I got to serve as your vice mayor and I watched you so intently because I was so scared to be mayor. And I followed every one of your movements and my goodness, you are the embodiment of a, a, a people leader. Um, just, yeah, um, and, and you haven't only been a leader on this council. You, you, a leader before you're on council and helping the community. Um, even now you're serving as a leader in the business community, in the faith community. Um, and I hope that continues because you are an amazing asset to Clear Lake. Thank you. Here is a, a picture of an award for you.
Thanks.
Oh, wait, one more thing. Um, so we have a representative from Mike Thompson's office. Why don't you come up here and?
Congressman Thompson's office. Did you just fly in from DC, sir?
No.
There you go.
Me?
Yes.
Hi. Hi, everyone. My name's Luca Moretti. I'm Congressman Thompson's field rep for Lake County. Um, and I'm really happy to be here today. Um, this is my fir-, one of my first formal actions in that role. Um, first person besides Brad Onorato to represent Lake County on behalf of Congressman Thompson. Um, and I take that really seriously. And, um, we'll just try to live in his and do everything I can to help Lake County, um, and follow his legacy. So with, with that out of the way, Congressman Thompson is in DC tonight. He couldn't be here today, but he did really want me to present three certificates of special congressional recognition to honor the service of Mayor Claffey, Vice Mayor Overton and Councilmember Prodock.
Thank you.
All right, Mayor, before you move on, um, I don't really feel like this is my time to make a speech, but I, I have to say just a couple of things. One, um, I agree with the comments. Um, Mayor Claffey, you have been exceptional as a mayor. And then, uh, I just want to say to the council, it's, um, it's, it has been a real pleasure working with all of you. Um, I've talked to, you know, there's, I have over four hundred colleagues in the state of California and I've never, um, talked to a city manager. They experienced the consistency and the support that I've had. So.
Thank you, City Manager. And, and truth be told, as a city council, we have a say, but the real work is done by city staff, all of you. You've done a superb job. You are the ones who are moving the city forward. We're window dressing and I'm proud to be it because I get to wear a suit. Um, but you're doing an incredible job. Please, please keep it up and serve this new council just as well as you served us. All right, now the moment you've all been waiting for. Item twenty-four, consideration of acceptance of the November twenty twenty-four election results. Resolution twenty twenty-four dash fifty-seven. Ms. Swanson.
Honorable Mayor and council members, the city council is being asked to adopt the resolution declaring the results of November fifth, twenty twenty-four general municipal election and authorize the city clerk to administer the oath of office to the elected council members. Um, the general municipal election was held, like I said, on November fifth for three city council seats. Um, we received the final official canvas on Wednesday morning. And, um, the canvas has been put into the staff report you have in front of you. And, uh, the top vote getters were Jessica Hooten, Tara Downey and Mary Wilson. So, uh, staff's staff's recommendation is adopting resolution twenty twenty-four dash fifty-seven and then authorizing me to give the oath of office to the new city council members.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Any questions from council? Seeing none, any comments from the public? If you have a comment on this item, please come forward. Seeing none, Madam Clerk, any? For the record, someone said they're going to do a great job. Madam Clerk, any comments on Zoom?
There are no comments on the Zoom, Mr. Mayor.
I will bring it back to council. Councilmember Kramer.
Yes, uh, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to, um, make a motion to approve um, the resolution to adopt, uh, the adoption of resolution number twenty twenty-four dash fifty-seven, declaring the now, okay, declaring the results of November fifth, twenty twenty-four and general municipal election and authorize the city clerk to administer the oath of, oath of office to elected council members.
I'll say it on that.
I have a motion from Councilmember Kramer, a second from Councilmember Sluton. Please vote in your portal.
Motion passes with unanimous vote of the council.
All right, moving on to item twenty-five, the swearing in of newly elected council members. Will Ms. Hooten, Ms. Downey and Ms. Wilson please come forward?
When you're done, I want you to come in here to the area also because we have one more item of business to do today. Just take a seat for right now. Um, find a seat. Yeah. All right, we have one more item of business to conclude today's meeting, and that is the, uh, the appointment of the mayor and vice mayor for twenty twenty-five. I move that we, uh, appoint our longest-serving councilman, Mr. Kramer, to the position of mayor.
I'll accept and accept that and second.
This is a voice vote? Since I don't know if it's on the. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All in, and no, no nays, so we're good to go?
Okay, then as my first act as mayor, I'd like to nominate, uh, Derek Sluton as, uh, vice mayor.
You can second it.
Oh, I second it.
Okay.
And there's been a motion made and second it, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
I think we should stand up so that people can take it.
Yeah. Wait. Not to be the rule guy, but we do have two more items on the agenda really quick.
Yes, and I'll, oh, future agenda items. Go for, um, yes, are there any future agenda items by council? City Manager? And so we will now adjourn the meeting.
Thank you. So, so let's take a picture of the new council.
Should we applause?
Yeah.